Hello and welcome to the October 19th meeting of Democrats of Greater Tucson. My name is Larry Bodine and I will be your host today. We have five of the candidates who are running for the Tucson Unified School District Board. Just to sort of run down their names really quickly, we have Ravi Grujwa Shah on the call, along with Natalie Luna Rose, Sadie Shaw, and Cindy Winston. Adam Reagan is a teacher in school and today is apparently the first day that the students are back. It's part of the hybrid education, so he's in class right now. But he did send a video, which I will play. I want to invite everybody to come to the National Coke Busters Day. It's this coming Wednesday, the 28th, starts at four o'clock. And it's your chance to poke the cokes, get out the vote, activate people to vote for 208. Sounds like a fantastic event. The idea is on Wednesday at 4:00 PM, everybody will meet at Speedway and Campbell. And then there will be a walk that starts at that point. There's also a webinar that day. And as soon as I get a chance after this call is over, I'll put up meeting information on the Democrats of Tucson website. The election is only 14 days away. It's getting closer and closer. I get a lot of calls, people want to know, if I'm a Democrat, how do I vote? Look for this article on the Democrats of Greater Tucson website. You'll see that we could start at the very top of the ticket. We urge everybody to vote for all of the propositions. Don't forget to state Corporation Commission, various LD races, supervisor, Pima County, the judges. Also, exciting news, you can get a free Mark Kelly and/or Joe Biden sign. They're all over my car. But if you want one for your front yard, this is the place to go to. 3532 East Grant Road, near Dodge, they're open today. This is all on the Democrats of Greater Tucson website. So today with us, we have four of the candidates. This is an informational forum, it is not a debate. And we're asking each candidate to spend 10 minutes telling us about what the issues are in TUSD, what they plan to do about them, and why people should vote for them. Sadie, tell us about yourself and why you're running and what you're going to do for the voters.
I'm a community advocate and of course, a TUSD parent. My daughter is in the second grade, her name is Salome, she goes to Monzo Elementary. Yeah, and you know, she's really the reason why I'm running for TUSD School Board. You know, I did not go to school in TUSD, though all of my family members did. I went to school in the anti-school district and so like, you know, I guess I figured that when I enrolled my daughter in TUSD, that they would have all of the amenities that I knew as a student. Amenities like art, music, PE. Those are three things that unfortunately, my daughter's school does not have. And you know, talking to voters on the campaign trail, a lot of them were aghast to hear that, you know, a lot of students, elementary students, do not have a PE class. Like, I feel like, you know, that's pretty obvious that young kids need to move and they need to use their bodies and figure out balance and stuff like that. And PE, I think, is key. And that also, of course, having a healthy living and healthy lifestyle, PE helps with that. And so, you know, when my daughter went into kindergarten, I thought, of course, that would be in her school day, but you know, lo and behold, it wasn't. And so I started to get involved in the school, asking questions first, just simply, why? Why isn't there an art teacher here when there's an art room? Why isn't there a music class available to the kids? Because I had that, like, I learned music theory as a child and I know that it helped me tremendously. And you know, obviously, PE is non-existent. But what I found was that although her school had all the infrastructure for those classes, it was cut because of, you know, the budget. And so I talked to her principal, found out that it was a budget reason why those things were canceled. And then I went up to the higher-ups. Specifically, I spoke to Joan Ashcraft, who is the Fine Arts Director for TUSD, and asked her, how can we get an arts program at TUSD? And was told that, you know, because of money, they cut the program, but we have this thing called OMA, Opening Minds to the Arts, which can, you know, give kids a little introductory course for different types of art classes or art mediums. And so that was great, but I don't feel like it's enough. I think that we need to have full-time programs, full-time teachers, so that they can dedicate themselves to those students and nurture them, nurture their creativity, nurture their innovation. And so that's really kind of how I got involved in my daughter's school. You know, that was about two and a half years ago, of course. And so, really, I wasn't planning on running for TUSD School Board. I was asked by a community member to run because unfortunately, the board has lacked the element of diversity for quite a long time, pretty much historically, it has lacked diversity. Especially for the African-American community in Tucson, we've only had one board member, that's Ms. Gloria Copeland, who served in the 90s. And so, just from what I experienced at my daughter's school, and also what I experienced as a volunteer at Catalina High School, where I was, you know, helping out the art teacher I found it extremely difficult to do anything, do anything in that classroom because the technology was unfortunately, behind a decade or more. I had made all these PowerPoints to show the kids because, you know, in a classroom, you can't always take the kids to a museum, so you have to bring the museum to the art class. So I had these lovely PowerPoint presentations with all these like contemporary artists of color, you know, showing these non-traditional art styles that I never got to see when I was in high school. But you know, once I got there, the projector wasn't working, so I had to present on the little laptop that they gave the teacher. So that's 30 students trying to see an image on one laptop, it was just, you know, it just didn't work. And, you know, every, every class period, each new day, we tried again, but it never worked. And so I know that that's things that many, many teachers are probably experiencing in their day-to-day, day-to-day teaching experience where the laptops, the technology, or even the Wi-Fi isn't strong enough to handle, to handle any, any new presentations. And I think, you know, this COVID problem, we are seeing, we are seeing that all of us, parents, students, and teachers, we are all experiencing those issues at the same time. And so, you know, of course, running for TUSD School Board in a time of crisis like we are experiencing now totally adds a whole nother element to the game because of course, all of us, all of the candidates have goals in mind. But because of COVID, you know, it changed the way that we, we have to have our students learn. And so COVID is obviously coming first about the issues that we have to take care of immediately. And so, you know, I think as a board member, I'm not really, I don't really think that the current board has handled this situation as well as they could have. We saw that there was a whole snafu with the technology in the beginning of the school year where, you know, some upwards of 7,500 students did not have the laptops or the Wi-Fi ports that they needed on day one of this school year. It happened at my daughter's school, you know, I heard, the first day that we went to get laptops, hours later, we had the principal call all the parents and say, hey, I'm sorry, but we're out of laptops and we should be getting some at the beginning of September. You know, I think that was an issue that truly the board is responsible for. Of course, they didn't, they, you know, pushed, pushed the blame on somebody else, they blamed COVID, which is, you know, an easy, an easy way out, I think. But you know, you don't order laptops on July 14th when you need them in less than three weeks. So, you know, my, my thoughts on COVID and how we can make sure that our students are actually learning, well, as a parent, I'm going to speak as a parent now, not as a candidate. I find that TUSD hasn't actually asked me or any parents, like, how their children are doing. Because I know my daughter, she, she's having a really hard time with online learning, she is not engaged, she is falling behind rapidly. She was, you know, one of the probably most excelling students in her class, but now, you know, after a whole quarter of online learning this year and then last year, you know, she's, she's falling behind. And I know that a lot of students in her class probably are forgetting the basics because that just happens when you, when you stop going to school for a while and, you know, they change everything about it. And so I really would like to see a more engaging class day, whether it's online, it's remote, or it's the hybrid model. I think a lot of students have lost their, their joy for going to school. And I hope that once this COVID crisis has ended, that we find a way to bring back that spark. Okay. We need to bring back that spark. And I think that, you know, once this is all over, we truly have to make the school day more engaging. And we can do that, of course, by investing in the arts. And not just as a support for the other subjects. As an art educator, when I went to college for art, like, we were moving towards this whole thing where art was not for a subject for itself, it was to support math, to support science. And of course, we can do that. I think teachers in other subjects can utilize art to make their subjects more interesting. But we need to have like a separate class for art because art is the beginning. It teaches students how to kind of deal with their emotions, to understand their emotions, to, to transform themselves, or just to, you know, get things off their chest. I mean, there's so much, so much, so much that can be helped with art. And you know, of course, music has the same benefits, it will help with music, it'll help with, you know, all kinds of things with processing. Yeah, so I think really, art is the key, it's one of the things that my platform is based on. My slogan is "Education and Art for All" because I think they go hand in hand. And so really, that's the basis of my, my campaign, is to bring back the arts.
Sadie, if I could just interrupt, working, what is your website and how can people find out about you?
Thanks for saying that, Larry, because I always forget to promote myself in that way. So my website is shah4tusd.com. I also have a Facebook page, if you search Sadie Shaw for TUSD, you'll see that. And also, please reach out to me if you have any more questions. My email is shahfortusd@gmail.com.
When I made the decision to decide to run for School Board, I actually worked for TUSD in a hybrid computer learning environment. I'm an award-winning science teacher with 28 years' experience. I've taught in four states, six different schools, grades K through 12. You may have noticed that I have a southern accent and obviously, I'm not from Tucson. And the reason for that is, is I've been married to this wonderful man named David Winston for 31 years. He's been a medical examiner with Pima County, and that's what brought me here. And we have two beautiful sons, and they are Zach and Samuel Winston. They are both products of TUSD. Our neighborhood school was Collier Elementary and I could not speak highly enough for it. The thing I admire about Collier is that it just wasn't all about test prep and kind of like what Sadie was saying, it sparked a joy in learning in my kids. It was, they balanced fun and, and excitement with the academic things that needed to be done. And they certainly had art and they certainly had music. And that is extremely important. And they both graduated from Sabino High School. Zach is a graduate of the University of Arizona, he does GIS satellite imagery for the University of Arizona under the USDA. My son Sam, because he went to a TUSD school and had David Kukla as his AP Calculus teacher, he was able to skip his first year of calculus when he went to the University of Portland and received a scholarship. And I misquoted this last time I spoke, but he got $84,000 when he went through Fast Food. So public education, my father disowned me. And the fact that I could rebound from, from that and have a son go do engineering, and yeah, my dad was originally an engineer, is very powerful to me. Education is the great equalizer and lifts all the boats. And so I've spent my entire career making sure that, yes, my kids have a very privileged life, but I want other people's kids to have that same privileged life. And I've done that through teaching kids science. Sam is currently in his senior year at the University of Portland. And he's developing, for his senior project, he's developing a cost-efficient ventilator. And again, because he had David Kukla and he also had Robert McSpadden, his Anatomy and Physiology teacher, he suffered club foot as, as an infant. And I can't help but think that those folks impacted him and encouraged him to go and pursue these things that he's doing now. I was raised in Marietta, Georgia, which is 20 miles northwest of Atlanta. I grew up on 32 acres, so I like spending a lot of time outside. My parents are Bob McDougall and Mary McDougall, this is a portrait of my mother, that she did, self-portrait. My dad was an aeronautical engineer for Lockheed, he worked there for 38 years, he did structures and loads. He helped design the C-5A, the F-22, and the C-130. He also managed major military budgets. And my mother was a portrait painter, again, that's, that's one of her, her works of art there. And they had a very tumultuous relationship. And I guess one of the reasons why I'm running is because when I was 16 years old, they were fighting, even though it was my birthday. And I called my US history teacher and I said, you know, they're fighting again and it's my birthday. And she said, come on over, I'll make you a cake. And because of that, that was a 30-year friendship. I went into teaching, I went to the College of Charleston in Charleston, South Carolina. I wish I could say because it had a great biology program, or it had a great theater program, or whatever. And it did have all those things, but the reason why I chose to live there is because it was close to the beach and was a beautiful city. But that's where I went to college and was going to be in wildlife management. I managed a sea turtle project at the age of 21 on Eto'o Island. But I found that even though I saved a lot of sea turtles and moved a lot of eggs, that the thing that I liked most was teaching elementary kids when I would take log head sea turtle skulls and bones to the kids in their classrooms. And they were very excited and I thought to myself, you know, if I really want to help save the environment, I probably need to teach. And so that's when I decided to teach. I've taught in South Carolina. I started my career at a place called Brentwood Middle School in North Charleston. And my fun fact, my claim to fame there is, two weeks before, I actually worked for a woman by the name of Lorna Colbert, who turns out to be Stephen Colbert's mom. I never met Stephen Colbert, but his mother was very magnanimous and I scrubbed toilets and trimmed boxwoods in her yard after Hurricane Hugo. So that was South Carolina. Then my husband did his residency at the University of Virginia, that's when we moved to Virginia. And I taught at a place called Woodbrook Elementary, that's when I taught elementary level. That was the only school that I taught where kids were economically advantaged. In fact, they were so advantaged that the PTA paid for my position, but it was only halftime. So then I decided to get a full-time job with a mental health agency and started doing children of alcoholic groups and substance abuse prevention education in Charlottesville, Virginia. My husband decided to become a medical examiner and did a fellowship in New Mexico. That was only for a year, so I didn't teach there. When he finally did get the real job, because he'd been in school for 22 years, he got hired at Wake Forest University to be a medical examiner there. And we thought that that was going to be it, you know, that was the dream job, right? And it turned out, they were just wanting to work him to death and had him on call every third weekend. And he was managing the residents and doing hospital cases and doing all sorts of things that weren't necessarily forensic pathology. So Tucson called and said, hey, we have medical investigators, you don't have to be on call every third weekend, you can spend some time with your young family. And that's, and we'll pay you more money. So when somebody says, hey, we'll pay you more money and have you do less work, that's when I ended up in Tucson, Arizona. And then I started my career at Sunnyside. That is where in 2003, I met Daniel Hernandez, he was in eighth grade. And he's probably my closest campaign advisor right now, he's a student that's inspired me to do this. I'm sure the Greater Democrats of Tucson are aware of the fact that he is credited with saving Gabby Gifford's life. And I'm proud of the fact that in eighth grade, when Sunnyside asked for a reference letter for him and several of his other colleagues, I was the one that filled out the paperwork that said, hey, this kid would be great for this class, he would be an asset. And that was kind of funny, and I don't remember if it was Daniel or not, but one child looked at the word "asset" and he said, miss, you called me an ass. And I said, no, I called you an asset. There's a difference. But anyway, so, you know, he went on to do obviously, great things. And I was at Apollo Middle School for eight years and I would have stayed there. However, they hired a superintendent who stole money from kids and there was a lot of, I was fired, you know, I joke that I've been abandoned, disowned, fired, and reconstituted. Apollo is when I got fired. I remember in the newspaper, there was an announcement that our school, because of our letter grade, was going to be reconstituted. So I said, hey. My husband said, hey, does this mean what I think it does? And I said, well, I'm not really sure. But they did tell me I had to re-interview for my job, but that's interesting. And they didn't hire me back, but they didn't give me the $5,000 signing bonus because they said that I was already employed there. You know, they, it was an interesting time. So after four years of that tumultuous situation, I got offered a job at a charter high school called Pima Partnership High School, which is a school that's predominantly for adjudicated youth or children with substance abuse issues. And I absolutely loved it because for the first time in my career, like Sadie was saying, I had a smart board that worked, I had a cart of iPads that worked, I had access to a van, I could take kids hiking, I could take kids backpacking, all of this at a time when, you know, Arizona was supposedly suffering with a budget crisis. And I thought to myself, you know, how is it that this school can manage to have all these things, yet, yet, you know, the district can't? But then they hired a superintendent that was the wife of the other one. And I ended up going to TUSD. So that sort of put the fire in my belly. That's how I ended up, I had enough, I just had enough. And I said, you know what, they need somebody good, I'm running, and here I am. Thank you so much.
I hate to interrupt, but tell us where people can find out more about you and website or Facebook page if you have one.
I do, I have a Facebook page, it's at Cindy4TUSD, and also have a webpage, so that's C-I-N-D-Y and the numeral four, TUSD.
All right, well, let's turn for the moment to Ravi Grujwa Shah.
Thanks Larry, and thanks everyone for having the largest district in Southern Arizona, and one of the largest in the Southwest. And so the decisions we're going to make, electing one of the six of us, or three to six of us to the governing board is going to really have the future of Tucson and future direction for our schools at hand. I'm Ravi Grujwa Shah, many of you know me, for those who don't, I'm running for the governing board for a number of reasons. I'm a TUSD parent, we have three children. Our oldest is a second grader at Line Weaver Elementary, so excuse me, a third grader now at Line Weaver Elementary School. She's eight years old. And we've been proud TUSD parents, this is our fourth year now. We also have two toddlers, they're twins, two and a half years old. And so we're going to be TUSD parents for the next 16 years. And so we are definitely committed to making sure that TUSD works for our family as well as every Tucson family. I'm also a family physician. I just started a few weeks ago as the CEO of SAFE, the Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation, but prior to that, I was working with the U of A banner system in a primary care practice, working with residents and medical students in a faculty clinic practice. And I get asked all the time on the campaign trail this last year, why as a family physician, you know, would I be running for the governing board for a school district? And there are so many reasons for that. You know, as a family physician, I've always loved taking care of patients, you know, whether it's one-on-one with patients, you know, talking to family members, taking care of patients in a hospital. As of a few months ago, I was still delivering babies and so work in the hospital with, with families. I loved, I loved the work as a family physician. But over my career, I've always seen myself as a physician advocate. And what can we do as physicians to really meet the needs of our communities, whether it's in the public health aspect or in the public policy aspect of how we can advocate as family physicians? So over the years, I've really been a physician advocate for my communities, whether it's back in Chicago, where I was working a decade ago, where I moved here from, advocating for communities of color, fighting against coal power plants and ensuring we have clean energy and clean air in Chicago. To work here in Tucson, working with the now late Richard Elias, as well as SAFE, the organization I'm now part of, ensuring that we have a ban on conversion therapy for LGBTQ youth. So a really great way to stand up for minority youth here in Pima County, we're the only place in Arizona that has this ban. So always, always really enjoyed my work as a physician advocate. And over the years, I've been hearing more and more from my patients here in Tucson about what's going on in the school districts. You know, during well-child visits, well-team visits, we have what's called a Heads questionnaire, we're trying to learn about Heads, home, education, activities, and other, other things that mnemonic. So for E for Education, we're always asking about our schools, how are things going in schools, how are, are you doing, is there any issues of bullying, or you feel like you're supported, you know, worth, what's going on, to both my, my patients and their parents. And I've been hearing over the years, just a lot of struggles that a lot of my patients and their parents are having in our schools. Are my students, they are lost in classroom sizes that are just too large to really meet their needs, disengaged with curriculum that's teaching to the test, not really engaging them with culturally relevant curriculum that really meets their needs. And seeing their behavioral health needs manifest during the school day without the resources that we need to really help them be ready to learn. And I've been hearing that for years. And I've seen that met out in my husband Tim's experience as a TUSD principal. So I'm married to an educator, he spent most of his career as an elementary school teacher and was a principal in TUSD for four years, as of two years ago. And heard a lot of the same experiences of some of the great amazing work that he can do as a principal down in Mid Wheel Park in one of our underserved communities here in Tucson, but not feeling that he had the resources to really excel and succeed in his work. And we've had the opposite experiences as TUSD parents. And so like I said, it's my fourth year as a TUSD parent. And we've been crazy happy about our experiences over the years, whether it's at Miles during her, our daughter's kindergarten year, or at Line Weaver, these now, third year at Line Weaver. And you know, she's part of an OMA program, you know, Sadie talks a lot about arts and music, and we've been fortunate enough to, to be part of that as well, as you know, as an OMA school. And you know, having my daughter be in an underwater opera two years ago, where she was a clamshell in an underwater opera with her class, and it was amazing seeing her on stage dancing and singing, especially coming from the STEM field that I do, you know, seeing that in my daughter was a great experience. And having her experience that has been amazing. And the chess clubs and of course, all the curriculum during the daytime in her GATE program is really engaging her and helping her meet her needs. And you know, I started getting involved as a TUSD parent over the years. During her kindergarten year at Miles, I was involved with the PTA, was a treasurer for the PTA. And you don't really understand some of the, what's going on in school finance until you're cutting checks for toilet paper halfway through the year because the school had run out of their budget for supplies and returning to the PTA to help with meeting the needs for the rest of the year. And after having that experience and really trying to understand the finances of our district, I joined the audit committee all over two years ago. And I've been serving as a member of the TUSD Audit Committee. You know, every month, we're going to be meeting again this Friday for two, two-plus hours. And every month, you know, around the table and now virtually, but with accountants and our, and our district financial leadership, really, you know, going through the budget and finances with a fine-tooth comb, trying to understand what's going on with our district and seeing, you know, the good and bad and the ugly in terms of our district finances. And I've been doing that And I've been doing that for over two years and that's been a great experience to try to really understand what's going on. And last year, along with Adam and a number of other folks, you know, served on the Family Life Curriculum Committee. You know, back in the spring of 2019, I was asked to join this committee as a physician member. And, you know, to come onto this committee to really help make sure it was medically accurate and age appropriate. That curriculum that we were able to pass was a really great way to see, you know, the coracle sausage being made, both on the backend as a, as a committee putting together our recommendations. And then on the front end, when it came to the governing board and all the community forums that we all got to love and witnessed last year during the summer and fall. So it was a really great experience, really understanding the process of board development and how everything, how everything happens. So, you know, my goals as a TUSD governing board member are multifold, but really the big three are making sure we have a sound COVID response. As a physician member on the governing board, making sure that we're listening to the scientists and the public health experts to make sure we keep our kids, our teachers and staff and the families they come home to safe and healthy. And so really making sure we have a sound COVID response on the public health aspect. And on the parent aspect, making sure it makes sense for our students and our families. And so that our families can work and do what they need to do and our students are learning. Because as Sadie has mentioned, and I'm sure Natalie will in a few minutes, our kids are really struggling with education and making sure that they're learning, that they're engaged, that they feel supported. Number two is making sure we have financial stewardship of our district. We have a really onerous budget and finances, over $500 million to half a billion dollars. I think we're doing a great job meeting state reporting requirements and meeting those needs. But I think we can do better making sure we're actually presenting and developing our budgets so that our governing board can understand it and make educated decisions and really drive direction for our district. And that all of you listening can hold us accountable because I'm not trying to be on the governing board to have smoke and mirrors, but I really want the, the public to be able to hold our governing board accountable. And finally, making sure we address diversity and inequities in our district. You know, having seen my, my husband's experience in Southwest Tucson and a mostly 90% Latinx community and free and reduced lunch. And having spent my career as a physician, you know, working with underserved communities, whether it be in the urban Chicago neighborhoods or here in Tucson, you know, working with mostly minority communities through my clinic and through the mobile health program that provides free care in the community. I've been committed to making sure we have a health equity and access as a physician over the years. And I'm going to be committed to making sure we have education equity and access as a, as a member of the governing board. So those are my big three areas that I want to try to succeed and work on as my, as my time on the governing board. We're going to have a tough year in 2021. It's going to be a really challenging year, trying to make sure we have safe schools open up. It's going to be a tough year on the financial ends as we're trying to deal with attrition of our schools and lower enrollment and what that means for our budgets. And so you have a really important decision ahead of you, making sure you elect three governing board members that are ready on day one to, to lead our district. And you hold us accountable and keep us engaged over this next year as well as in the future. So thank you for your time. Thank you for being here today. I'm actually going to, I can, let's see if I can do the rename here. Put my website up here. You know, we need your help over these next last two weeks. We're having a lot of events. We'll be phone banking and phone texting this Sunday. So please go to our website, please get ahold of us.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's turn to Natalie Luna Rose. And Natalie, you have 10 minutes. Tell us all about yourself.
Okay. Thank you, Larry, and thank you to Democrats of Greater Tucson for having me this afternoon. So my name is Natalie Luna Rose, one of the six candidates for the TUSD governing board. I am a Tucson native, born and raised. My family goes back a long ways. My, my mother was born here as my grandparents. So we have a long tradition here in Tucson. I am married with one daughter who is a seventh grader at Alice Vale Middle School. And she's on lunch break right now, so hopefully she does not bounce in to tell me she's done with lunch. So if she does, say hello to her. Hopefully she doesn't. And I am a product of TUSD schools. I went to Pontius Elementary. I went to Alice Vale Junior High. It was junior high back in the late eighties. And Rincon High School. I'm a graduate of the U of A with a degree in media arts and minor Mexican-American studies. And I've spent majority of my career here in Tucson, working in different public entities. I worked, I did work for Congressman Rollo Verhova for several years. I worked for the National Park Service as a park ranger. My favorite job, don't tell the congressman. And I've also worked for the Vale School District. So as their communications director for several years. So I have an idea of what public school in terms of what they deal with internally. I sat in a lot of those internal meetings as an employee. And it gave me, I think, experience on what school districts need to do and what, and the mandates that they have to meet from the state. Arizona is not an easy state to either, to be an educator in, flat out. We're 49th in education. Funding is always lacking. And so when my daughter started to become of age and she was about four years old, we went to go look at preschools. And we looked at a little, we looked at a couple of private programs, which were wonderful. But I'm, I'm a huge proponent of public school education. And I really wanted her to be in a public school setting. And so we looked around and we found Sewell Elementary. So she started there from pre-K all the way through fifth grade. And it was during that time that I started to realize the inequities within the district. Sewell is, if you don't know where that's located, it's on Fifth and Craycroft. And a little ways down from Fifth, it's off of Cray, off of Fifth, but a little ways down from Craycroft. And it is a school scene on the east side. And we had a school of kids that was a high percentage, 85% plus of free and reduced lunch. We were one of the more privileged families. I've been very lucky and with my husband to, to work hard to get to where we are. And I ended up becoming the booster club president and site council president of Sewell Elementary. The whole time Lily, my daughter Lily, was attending there. And so I started to realize what the school needed. Dr. Ravi mentioned about the school coming to the PTA for money for toilet paper. Now, we didn't get that, but we got a lot of, I want to take our kids on a, on a trip to the desert museum or to the zoo. And they already allotted their budget for the year and it's barely September, October, and they've already used. They don't have anything. So we did a lot of fundraising. And because Sewell is an older school with a lot of parents that were open enrolled and we were also open enrolled. We didn't have that connection to the neighborhood. So we had to do a lot of work with the surrounding corporations and businesses. And, and while I was grateful as the student, as the school board president and the site council president for the community's help, it was really distressing me that I had to go to the community's help. So I started talking to some friends that, kids who were in different schools across the district like Carrillo and UHS, and we're starting to find these same issues. There's not enough funding, says the principals of those schools. Bathrooms are crumbling. Sewell had horrible bathrooms, no soap. And we just started to find that if you really got down to it and talked to the principals and you looked at their, their budget, it's, it was really lacking. So what we did, group parents and I, we, we co-founded the Tucson Unified Parent Advocacy Council. And we divided ourselves up by legislative districts, LD nine, LD 10, LD three. I am an LD 10. So we took some of those parents, those parents got together and we started as the acronym TUPAC, which is kind of funny, I know. And we started to be, we're, to advocate for the district on, as parents. We want to have, you know, we're the, we're the second largest school districts in Southern Arizona. The largest school districts in Arizona, second largest in the state. We have 89 schools, 45,000 students, and we're just not being served down here. And we have spent the last couple of years advocating with other, with state legislators. And we've had a few of them come to the district. We've had tours showing them the roof over at Tucson High, the classrooms over at Carrillo, the bathrooms over at Sewell, I mean, and really trying to make them realize that this is a dire situation, that the governor who, who tells themselves as an education governor hasn't fulfilled that promise. Now, we haven't had the best of luck of getting some of the Republican legislators here, but to start with legislators on the Democratic side, I think even they were surprised about the need that TUSD has, especially when we've got a school facilities board that is just not giving out money. So as time's gone on and we've been, TUPAC's been together for about three years now. I was starting to feel like, and the board is changing, especially when Ms. Foster decided to not run again, that I thought about it and decided that I'd like to see some more parent involvement on the board. We have a couple of parents now and I think they've done, they've done a good job. But I'd like to see different parent voices. I live on the east side. I grew up on the east side. I went to east side schools. There's a lot of, I think the district has not done a lot of outreach to the east side and the families. And we're, we're bleeding students from this side. And we've got good schools. We've got, we've got great programs. And while I don't want to get the district off the hook because there's a lot of things that the district needs to do in terms of the budget, make it more transparent, I also want to highlight that we've got some great students and teachers and programs in, in TUSD and that they don't need to run off to the Lehman Academy or the Vale School District, that they can stay right in TUSD because they're going to get a great education for their child. And that's why I'm here. I want to be a strong parent voice. I want to be a parent voice of, for those who feel like they've been forgotten by the district and maybe are holding on because they're hoping for change. And that's what I hope that I will bring to the school board. And Larry, I'll beach to the punch. My website is NatalieforTUSD.com. It's Natalie for TUSD, both on Instagram, Twitter and Facebook. And my email is NatalieforTUSD@gmail.com. And I could try to put in the Q and A, but I don't think I can type those in, Larry. It's not letting me type it in. So, but you're welcome to email me. You're welcome to ask any questions. We are doing a phone bank later this week. If you would like to help, I've also on my website, you can type in your information to volunteer. We also have lit drops on Saturday and I'm walking most mornings. I took this morning off because school's back in session. So my daughter is, is getting back and to, real briefly, I know Ravi had also mentioned and Sadie, that it's, it's a tough situation being a parent working from home. I'm working from home full time. The communications director, Arizona Center for Disability Law, and we advocate for the rights of people with disabilities. But I'm working full time from home and I have to check in to make sure that my daughter's in her class full time. And it's, it's been a challenge and it's been hard. And she has struggled and I know a lot of kids are struggling. But I asked, we actually had this conversation last night. I asked her, did you, are you excited? Do you want to go back to class? And she told me, no. She said she understood the seriousness of the situation and she didn't want to bring the illness home, especially to her grandparents, because normally after school, she walks over to her grandparents' house. So our kids know and, and we need to give them more credit and, and they're, and, and give them grace, give our teachers grace. It's a tough time for all of us. So again, Natalie Luna Rose, and please check me out at NatalieforTUSD.com or Facebook at NatalieforTUSD. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Good afternoon, Democrats of Greater Tucson. My name is Adam Reagan and as you probably know, I'm one of the candidates running for the Tucson Unified School District Governing Board in the upcoming election. Now, I wish I could be there with you this afternoon. It's about 4:00 AM on Monday morning. So by the time you are watching this, I will actually be in the classroom with my students for the first time since March 13th. And I'm very excited to see my students. I've been working with them for the past nine weeks during quarter one remotely. And today is my district's first day back for hybrid learning. So I wasn't, unfortunately, wasn't able to take off the time to come see you live on the video stream today. But I think you can understand and agree with me that being in the room with my students was the most important thing in developing those relationships today. So I do apologize that I'm not there with you, but it is for a good reason. I do want to thank everyone for being here and we've got some great things to talk about. So I kind of want to share with you a little bit about myself, a little bit about why I'm running and what I hope to accomplish on the governing board. And then of course, how to get in touch with me. And I'm going to try to do this in a shortened time because I recognize this is a video and I want to keep your attention as much as I can. So again, my name is Adam Reagan and I am a classroom teacher running for the Tucson Unified School District Governing Board. I'm very excited to bring a unique perspective to the governing board that has been missing for a while. The perspective of a classroom teacher who thinks about what the students need and what his colleagues need is a big part of the discussion now more than ever. The COVID-19 pandemic has changed everything. Like I was just saying, I've been remote with my students since March 13th when we shut down. And that's been a change and now we're rolling into hybrid. And so I'm the candidate that actually has the experience of having taught before the pandemic, during the pandemic, switching to remote, and then I'm coming over now into the hybrid. And I would like to bring that experience to the governing board because I feel like that voice could be one of the most important voices that we have, guiding the decisions that the next Tucson Unified School District Governing Board is going to have to make. As a lot of you know, there are three open seats on the board right now that will start in January. So three of the six candidates will be elected in November and we will take office in January. And the work has to begin day one. We have decisions to make, whether it's looking at our half billion dollar budget and looking at what any loss of enrollment or funding might do. We're about to get our numbers from the district to find out exactly, did we lose students? Are we only going to get 98% of our funding from prior year and what that might actually look like? And that's going to involve some mid-year budget reallocations that start in January. So we need folks that are ready to start governing, that know the classroom, know students, know the profession on day one. Now, a little bit about me, I again, am a teacher. I've been involved in our local political scene and activism for education, the LGBT community, as well as several other causes and with nonprofits and serving on boards for many years in Southern Arizona. And I never thought that I would be running for office. And a couple of years ago, I decided that the teacher perspective was something that TUSD really needed. So I jumped in the race and I worked really hard and with two seats open, I came third. So we just missed our seat and I decided that I wanted to run one more time so that I could try to continue that conversation, especially now more than ever, without a teacher on the board. And with such important decisions being made, I thought that voice and perspective was important. I never expected a pandemic in the middle of an election. And while it has been challenging, we have had some huge successes with our campaign. We have done lit drops at tens of thousands of doors. We have put signs up across town. We have made calls, sent text messages, sent mailers. We have done a lot of outreach to reach out to the community to let them know about this race. And what's super exciting to me is that right now, at least we haven't seen the numbers yet from the recorder's office for Monday morning, but as of Saturday afternoon, over 200,000 ballots have been sent back in in this election already. We know that folks are very excited to be voting in this election from the top of the ticket all the way down, flipping that ballot over so you can look at the propositions on the back. And of course, y'all know that I'm going to say yes on 208. And that's where I want to end the conversation, where I actually start my ballot. And what I think all of us could be doing right now, my call to action for all of the DGT audience today is to get out there, turn out the vote and to remind folks to start at the bottom of their ballot and work their way up. We need to vote for Biden Harris, absolutely. We need, we need systemic change at the top of the ticket. And I believe that the Biden Harris ticket will absolutely get us there. Betsy DeVos has got to go. She has been disastrous for education and destroying our public education system throughout the entire country. We also have Mark Kelly to elect and make sure that we have a senate that will We also have Mark Kelly to elect and make sure that we have a senate that will reflect public education. And as we move our way down, we have state legislative races throughout LDs nine and 10, three, two, 11, four, all the ones that touch Greater Tucson. We've got to make sure that we get out the vote for those candidates because we need to get legislators up in Phoenix that understand what public education is about. As a potential school board member, I need to be able to advocate with legislators to say, this is the kind of funding that we need. This is what it means in the, in our classroom for when you mandate high stakes testing or when you start putting in certain regulations about curriculum. So having folks in office that understand education, super important. And we keep working our way down and we get to those school board races where you'll find me, the Tucson Unified School District race about midway down your ballot. And I'm asking everybody to vote for me because that teacher perspective is a unique one that is different to anything that any other candidate is bringing. And I would like to thank the other candidates for being here today and what they've brought to the race as well. Three of us will be elected. And I think that for most of Tucson, you can find three voices that represent and reflect your values. And I'm asking you to make sure that you vote for those right values. There is a candidate out there right now that has said things like that he wants to potentially arm teachers, that he's against Prop 208, that he's against restorative justice and practices in the classroom. And to me, that is not the direction TUSD needs to be going. We need three board members who can bring different ideas, independent voices, have a discussion with one another, work collaboratively, and then come together on a decision and do what's right for our students and our educators and the entire district. So I'm really looking forward to getting to work. I hope to be one of those voices elected. So don't forget to do that middle part of the ballot. As we keep going down, we've got the judges. There's some great information for y'all to check out on the, there's some different websites to check out on the judges. But then when you flip that ballot over, we get to my favorite thing to talk about, which is Prop 208. This is the Invest in Ed or the Red for Ed Initiative, in which if the voters pass it, it will restore almost a billion dollars of funding to our classrooms for teacher salary, for support professional salary, and for one of my favorite things, career and technical education, dual enrollment and AP. I'm a dual enrollment teacher. I'm sure a lot of you already know that about me. I teach high school English. So I'm a certified secondary teacher, meaning I'm a high school teacher, but I'm also a college writing faculty teacher and I teach my district's dual enrollment writing classes. Dual enrollment programs open up a huge door for us and our students. And I mean that in two ways. For us as a district, it allows us to be competitive and bring students into the district and get something that they can't get at a charter school. It also allows our students to graduate with real college credits in their pockets when they walk across the stage. They are ready for college because they've had a rigorous class and they have also had no tuition to pay to get those college credits. I'm a big fan of, there was a couple of years ago, a student who graduated from Santa Rita High School with 61 credit hours. That kid graduated high school and at the same time became a college junior on the same night. So Prop 208 will help us fund those programs and I'm looking forward to its passage. And I'm hoping that everybody in DGT can continue to do outreach to help get those ballots turned in. And having that conversation with folks, I find that if I start with 208 and work my way back up to the top of the ticket, folks are really engaged and excited to vote for an education ticket. And that starts to be with Prop 208. So I always say, start at the back of the ballot, flip it over, start with Prop 208 and work your way up. Don't forget Prop 481 as well, as a, for Pima Community College, as a way to ensure that the college doesn't have to raise tuition on our students. So this is really an education year for us. And I want to end my time in my video by saying, A, thank you for allowing me the space. Thank you for creating a campaign in which a teacher could bring those ideas to the table. And I know that with your help, with your support, we're going to get there on Election Day. I remain open to everybody. A lot of you have my cell phone number. It is 5007811. Feel free to call or text me. Just remember I go to sleep like 9:00 PM. So if I have to, I'll call you back the next morning. And then we've also got my website, adamforTUSD.com. Check it out. See if you can spread the word to your family, friends and network. This is going to be a huge election and we need every vote, every single person across Tucson to make sure that their voices are heard in this election. And with that, I'm going to say thank you, everybody. And now I'm going to get to my classroom and get ready for my students to come back in. So stay safe, everybody. Thank you.
Well, that was terrific. Well, I just wanted to thank everybody, all the candidates for making their presentations. We had Ruvie Rabois Shaw, Natalie Luna Rose, a video from Adam Reagan, Sadie Shaw and Cindy Winston. And of course, I want to remind you that the time to vote is right now. Get your ballot, do what I did, walk it into a polling place by, at the recorder's office and drop it off. Not a, it's a ballot drop off place, not a polling place. But with that, I want to wish all of you a very best luck in your campaigns. And I want to thank you very much for coming to today's meeting of Democrats of Greater Tucson. So with that, we're out of time. So I'm going to say bye-bye. It was just terrific to have you all on board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.